Welcome to the Wednesday, July 23rd, 2014, meeting of Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. The first item of business is approval of the minutes from June 11th, which you will recall as several meetings that we've canceled, so you have to sort of stretch your mind back to that point.
Especially hard if you weren't there, too.
I'm sure I was there. I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Jim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any comments, Scrivners' notes, other observations? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes of June 11th. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Little abstentions.
Deb and?
Nels.
And Nels. Okay, great. Thank you. Correspondence? Anything from staff?
I think the only thing I was going to share this evening is at Monday night's council meeting at this time in this room, during the public comment period, Pat O'Connell was before the council and discussing the topic of fences, and specifically fences that are in street-side yards. Prior to 1991, the city did not have any limitations on the heights of fences within front or street-side yard areas. And in the update in 91, it placed a limitation on the heights of fences that could be located in those areas. Within a front yard setback, they are limited, a solid fence is limited to three feet in height, and a open fence, so you think about a picket fence or potentially a chain link fence, is limited to four and a half feet in height. Once you get beyond the front setback, and let's say it's 20 feet in that district, then you can go to a six-foot-high solid fence, which is the maximum height that's allowed in most of our residential zoning districts. The same limitations apply on a street side. So if you had a corner lot where they have a front yard and then a street-side yard, that street-side yard is usually less than the front. That's usually maybe 75% or 2/3 of the front setbacks, so where you have a 20-foot front setback, you may have 15 on the street side. And so there is a limitation. That same limitation applies to fences in the street yard setback, street-side setback as well. And there are instances where we have a number of fences that were constructed 30 or 40 years ago that are out to the property line, and they are six feet, and they are solid fences. And they're getting to that age where they're needing to be replaced, and homeowners have placed landscaping, have kind of established that as they're, oftentimes if you're a corner lot, sometimes the rear yard ends up a little bit shallow, and some of that street-side area ends up as part of their rear yard, and they fenced it all the way to the usually property line on that street side. And they're encountering difficulties under the code today that would not allow that fence to be replaced in that location if they're going to be constructing a new fence who'd have to meet the current standards underneath the zoning code. So Pat was asking the council to consider providing some relief to those individuals and those neighbors, neighborhoods that have become accustomed to the fences in those locations, and asked the council to explore what we could do. You may recall, we talked briefly about a year and a half ago about allowing some encroachment in that street yard setback. That is a very consistent conflict that we encounter with respect to fences. Most people understand that you don't want to have a six-foot fence out in front of your home, obstructing the view to the house. But on the street side, that's kind of a clear shot into their backyard, and for their privacy, they generally like to see a fence. And you end up with maybe a 15-foot no-man zone between the curb line and you get to that street-side setback, the fence in their yard begins. And so those comments were received, and I just wanted to see if the commission would like to talk about that. We could certainly prepare some information for the next meeting if you'd like to discuss that topic.
Yeah, I think it's sure an interesting topic, just even historically, as we've grown in this country, and there are countries that had a tendency to put wall, not just fences, but walls around, and you see it certainly in Mexico, maybe other places as well.
Walls with broken glass on top.
With...
Broken glass on...
Yeah, that's less humorous than it might sound like.
Yeah.
But it is an issue, it's an intriguing issue of how we get to where we are now in terms of what we... We have such a history in many of our American cities of kind of lawns that spread, we share with the neighbor, and there's no demarcation between you and the neighbor, it just kind of wanders. And I know I've been, especially when we went to Africa, people would look at pictures that I brought from Moscow, and were dumbfounded that there's this sort of park-like sensibility between our homes, and they couldn't imagine living like that. I don't know whether you have any background material on how fences, and it's those Zen guys, isn't it? The ones at the end of the block are the tough ones.
Yeah, I didn't have any time to prepare anything for tonight, but we certainly can. We've got shows and photographs of examples. We can do some diagrams of what are some of the challenges associated with that type of situation. And I've asked Becky to do a little research in some of the surrounding communities of how they have addressed the street side. It's pretty consistent, pretty common that those height defenses and solid fences aren't allowed in front yards, but there is some variation on the street side. But we could certainly put that together and provide a report at our next meeting.
Okay. Did council provide any direction?
There was no direction at that time. I provided just kind of an explanation of what I believe was the intent of the code when that was established, clarified some of what the comments were relating to, and there was no direction given that time, but I think the council would like us to take a look at.
Okay. And the example that I think of is a series of houses along Blaine, in the range where the armory is on one side, on the other side there are, and there it's like curb, sidewalk, fence.
Yes.
Sort of no space, no elbow room at all in there.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think in the past, I was trying to recall, I think probably in the past 10 years, we have granted at least seven or eight variances for fences in this kind of very same situation. And several of them were related to homes that had no backyard. The home was set five feet from the rear property line, and that street-side yard that they had kind of historically fenced in was really their only effective private yard area that they had, and other similar type situations. So we could share, go over and review how many of those we've seen, how many have been granted, how many have been denied. And if we see kind of that either continuing conflict or continuing granting of variances, it may indicate that we should look at the code and see whether any changes are warranted.
This is about, you know, may I invariably wonder, but I was, I did some research in Clarkston a couple, several weeks ago, and my wife and I rode up and down, we were searching for a house, and so we were riding up and down the alleys of Clarkston. And I was stunned to find that Clarkston has paved alleys, very, quite neat paved alleys, I might say, and we certainly can't say that, and my alley being one of the only paved ones in town. So in that regard, how do we deal with this spatial configurations? I was just amazed, and we were on a different kind of a search, so we found ourselves going up and down, up and down all these alleys, and I was just amazed. It was so much fun to ride your bike in it because they were all paved.
Ours had more rustic charm.
That would be a very kind idea to share.
Nice bike.
Do we have some history of the purpose behind the side yard and the side street limitations?
For the fences themselves? We'll have to take a look at. I doubt we're going to find much that's very specific to that.
Because it'd be nice to look at, well, what's the reasoning behind it?
I mean, I could show you some diagrams that I think will probably illustrate somewhat of the reasoning behind it, even when you start looking at blocks areaally, and how you kind of have that open space that wraps around the block. But it'd be better to show us some diagrams and examples, so it's better to visualize.
I only ask because we have that kind of property.
Yeah.
We're on the corner lot, and we have a six-foot-high fence in the back, all the way around the back, so.
Joel?
Council apparently also made either discussed or made a decision with respect to a traffic study.
Parkview Estates?
Could you comment on that and give a bit more context?
I can. I don't have a diagram up, but Parkview Estates, which was the subdivision that includes Moscow Building Supply, the large vacant lot north of Moscow Building Supply, Olive Rodeo, and the residential uses behind it all the way over to Polk, was approved in approximately 2000, '99 and 2000. One of the conditions of the establishment of the rodeo intersection with 95 was that the city entered into an agreement with ITD that stated that if traffic mitigation was necessary, and specifically, I think they were speaking of a traffic signal, that the city would be responsible for the cost of the installation of that signal, because we were essentially establishing a new city-street connection to the state highway system. The city then passed that responsibility on to the developer through a development agreement, and essentially stated the developer was responsible for that cost if mitigation was necessary. And then it set a trigger that no building permits would be issued on Lot 1 of Block 1, which was the, I want to say, just about eight-acre parcel that was north of Moscow Building Supply, the large undeveloped lot. And the development agreement stated that no building permits would be issued on that property until they had conducted a traffic study to determine whether mitigation was warranted, and if it was, then essentially they would be responsible for the cost of that mitigation or the cost of the signal installation. The owner of that property replanted it, you may recall. We had the six two-family residential lots off of Jefferson that were approved by the council, and that development agreement was amended, and those lots were allowed to get a building permit prior to the traffic study because they weren't viewed as being substantial traffic generators. I think the thought of the council at the time back in 2000 was get a large lot, you were maybe going to have a large commercial user that would have a number of vehicle trips per day. The council was approached probably two months ago with a proposal to create a lot for a, it was about 20,000 square foot lot out of that larger parcel. It was positioned, well, I should step back, after the residential lots were approved on the east side, then there also was a lot line adjustment with the Moscow Building Supply property where they purchased some additional property north of them, I think for future parking expansion. So we had kind of the remainder of that lot. And then two months ago, there was a request to divide a 20,000 square foot lot that was adjacent to Moscow Building Supply on the 95 frontage off for a commercial user, which the council approved. And then there became some difficulty getting a access established in that location. There was a pre-existing agreement between the state and the city that there would only be a one 12 or 14-foot wide skewed entry-only access to that large parcel with the intent that access would be gained off of rodeo. They did a lot line adjustment to move that .42-acre parcel up to the corner of rodeo in 95 so that it could gain access off of rodeo, and the council approved that lot line adjustment. And one of the requests associated with that was the applicant requested that they not be required, or they'd be able to proceed to a building permit on that .42-acre parcel because they had an interested party and ready to go, and their traffic study was underway, and it wasn't complete yet. And they were concerned about the time it would take to get through the ITD's review and approval of the traffic study, and so they requested that they be allowed to proceed to a building permit on just that .42-acre parcel. So that was approved by the council. The traffic study is still ongoing. We received the draft of it about two weeks ago. ITD has reviewed and commented, and those comments are back now to the applicant to review. So the traffic study is underway, but the .42-acre parcel was released from having to have the traffic study completed before permits would be issued.
What's it do to the liability for building a signal? Should one be...
Yeah, liability still remains with the original developer, and they will still, they have to incorporate all of the land uses, all known, all proposed. So when they look at the trip generation, traffic generation, they will take into consideration this property, so that all be considered as part of their traffic study, that this was building would be allowed to continue. The use was viewed as being a low, it's a Minneke auto repair building, to be a fairly low trip generator, and therefore was not viewed as being something that would, you know, create a hazard at the intersection. So that study will be underway, so, and as, like I said, the comments have been back to the applicant, and I'm assuming they're working on revising the study.
I guess I was worried it was sort of passing liability onto the city.
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's adequate value remaining in the remaining undeveloped property, I think the city's position is probably protected. You just, at this, the council is pretty clear that they would not allow any further development. You don't want to see this get chipped away a little bit, little bit at a time, and then you get to the end, and there's not enough value to be recouped out of it. In hindsight, this should have been done at the very beginning when the subdivision was approved, because all the residential sales and all the proceeds of those are all long gone by now, and that should have been the time that it was negotiated and a study done based on the assumption of land uses, and then you could have taken by phase of development, you could have collected that mitigation to compensate for it. But hindsight's 2020.
Makes me uncomfortable.
So the remainder of the lot is kind of L-shaped? It has some...
It's largely square with a little notch.
Okay.
Because it was pretty much, once the Moscow Building Supply adjustment and the two-family lots were taken out, it was pretty much a square. There'll be a little kind of notch in the corner, so it's not a very elongated L shape. It's still fairly square with a notch out.
The remainder is still about six acres, then?
A little over five acres. Yeah, it's five plus acres, I believe.
Okay.
Does the city have any other kind of mechanisms for protecting itself from being, holding the street light in this case?
Collected up front, I mean, like I suggested, the preferred way would be prior to the approval of subdivision, you would complete the study, you would assess the impacts, you would see as the project built out at what phases maybe the warrants would be met, enter into an agreement, and collect a portion of that mitigation with each phase so that you're kind of collecting it as the proceeds are coming in off the project so that...
And then you're prepared once...
Yeah.
...ITD says, put a signal in.
Correct. A signal in that location of the three-leg intersection may be about $100,000, $120,000 probably.
Which, spread across the proceeds of all of that development, would have been relatively less painful to the developer than to take it out of the last sale.
Which is what we did in Peterson Second Edition. We knew there'd be some mitigation necessary at Baker and Peterson, and so we have assessed their proportionate share of that impact, and then we have allocated on each phase a certain percentage of that mitigation that they needed to pay. And so that's the way the development agreement is set up with that subdivision, and that would be my preferred method of how this one would have been done. The other, so that's how I would approach it in the future.
Other correspondence? Joel, Transportation Commission?
We haven't met for a while due to summer schedules, and our next meeting is August 7th, and I haven't seen an agenda yet.
Okay. Thank you. Open microphone. We've reached that point where we have allocated 15 minutes for members of the public to come and speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on the agenda or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. No one here tonight wishes to take advantage of that opportunity. All right. Next up, review of North Main Street zoning amendment recommendation and council direction.
And this item was really more of a report back. As you may recall, we looked at the North Main corridor in response to a council goal to expand the perceived downtown area north on Main to E Street. And so we did an examination of the area really from A to E, looking at different options, both assessing the existing land uses, their compliance, the structures and the setback compliance, parking availability. We looked at the application of several different zoning districts, and ultimately the conclusion of the commission was that the existing district appeared to be most compatible with that area, that it was distinctly different from the downtown core largely due to the transportation system that exists there, the highway and the couplet system, that it was going to be difficult to kind of replicate exactly the downtown core. But there were several recommendations that the commission made, and there's a memo that we drafted, and the commission approved and transmitted to the council. And two of the recommendations focused upon an examination of a greater allowance of residential uses in that area, and actually, quite honestly, in our commercial districts as a whole. You may recall, we had the anytime fitness that went through the PVD to put the residential units above, and how we wish to see more of that opportunity. And then the second recommendation was related to the 10-foot front setback and a conditional use permit allowance for the reduction of that front setback where it was consistent with the surrounding character and land use. And so reported back to the council on the commission's recommendations. The council was supportive and requested the commission to go ahead and explore what would be necessary to amend the code to accommodate those two items. And so we're going to begin work on that. What we anticipate is that we will look at all of the commercial districts and the residential use allowances that we currently have, so we'll do kind of an inventory tally of how and where residential uses are allowed in our commercial districts, and make some recommendations to the commission about possible changes there, as well as the allowance of the reduction of the front setback for the conditional use permits. So we're going to begin that, and I think we should have that for our next meeting as well.
Questions? All right. Regional Economic Indicator Report. This will be part of our professional learning, sort of, the nature of Moscow.
This is just a little, actually, it's not little, it's, there's a little bit, a lot of information here, but it was one that I put together for an annual real estate report that we do, that Pluss Commercial does, and that we participate in. And I thought it might be kind of interesting. There are a few things I thought were, I guess, kind of enlightening about the last decade, and how it has impacted the local economy that might be interesting to the commission as we look at land use and development proposals, you know, into the future. So I thought I'd kind of go through this fairly quickly, but I thought it might be interesting to the commission, and since I had it prepared, I could share it. The, I can think as everybody's probably well aware, and has heard, probably ad nauseam through the press, that this great recession, we've seen about 8.7 million jobs across the nation were lost over the course of the Great Recession beginning in late 2007. That is certainly a significant number of jobs. The only two states actually didn't lose any jobs, obviously, were in the energy industry regions, so North Dakota and Alaska were really the two states in the nation that didn't experience any significant job loss, and really have grown through the energy boom that we've seen over the course of the last several years. Of the, as of September of last year, of the other 48 states, 12 had regained to their pre-recession job levels, with the remaining 36 states still not recovering to the 2008 levels. As of May of this year, that was just a few months ago, that was a significant benchmark that as a nation, the job numbers, although you have to be careful about the job numbers, and you have to be careful about the quality of jobs that have come back since that time, because those are very different things. A lot of full-time jobs have been replaced with part-time jobs, and the quality of the jobs and the earnings and wages have changed the landscape. But on the overall gross number, employment has recovered to that, but there are some caveats to that. As you can see, it took about, what, two years from 2008 to '10 to wipe out 8.7 million jobs, and four years to recover back up to the pre-recession state. And again, the mix of these jobs and the quality of those jobs is something to be aware of. That's too small to even read. As you look through the business cycle across the nation, April of 2009, essentially every state in the nation was in recession. As you move into April of 2008, two were in expansion, Dakota, North Dakota and Alaska. Several were recovering, and four were at risk. Again, the recovering, as of April 2013, we had now three more states, Texas, Oklahoma, and...
Utah.
Utah that had recovered, thank you. And several others had tipped back into risk on the east coast. And now, as we look at November 2013, pretty much everybody is in a recovering state, and there were, I think, 11 states expanding at that point in time. And we had one more added in '14.
It's interesting that that's in the middle. That middle of the country is a little bit surprising. I'm not sure I would have predicted that.
Yeah. As you look closer at the state of Idaho, in the June 2014 Department of Labor Idaho Employment Report, it stated that through the 12 months that ended in December 2013, Idaho recovered 21,000 of the 56,000 jobs that were lost in the recession within the state of Idaho. And while that recovery rate was 40th among the states, it underscored the slow job growth the state experienced during the first several years following the recession. And at that point, they indicated that they thought the state should reach the pre-recession job levels in the first half of 2015, but how that mix of jobs has changed dramatically. In 2014, Idaho ranked 49th in per capita earnings, only ahead of Montana, and behind Mississippi and Arkansas. And so, you know, the mix of jobs and the earnings and level of wages has certainly declined in this time period. This is difficult to see, but as you look at the jobs and the wages, this is above 50,000, or, yeah, this is under 30,000, so the jobs that pay under 30,000 annually, jobs from 30,000 to 50,000, and then above 50,000. So in 2007, we had 45.3% of the total jobs in the state of Idaho paid under $30,000, and represented 21.6% of the wages. In 2012, '13, it had grown 2%, so to be 47%, 47.4% of the total jobs, and 30% of total wages in the state. So you saw increase in obviously the number of positions that were in that under 30,000. From 30,000 to 50,000, they represented 46%, 46.4% of the total jobs, and 62% of income. They've now dropped down 6% to represent 40% of the total jobs, and 47% from 62% of total wages down to 47% of total wages. And then above 50,000, in 2007, it was 8.2% of the jobs, and 16.4% of total wages. And now in '12 and '13, it's now 12% of total jobs and 21% of total wages. So you're seeing a growth, obviously, here and below, but the shrinking of the middle class is...
The shrinking of the middle class.
Is certainly bearing itself out in Idaho. If you look at the total state employment, the peak here in 2007 at 727,000 jobs, bottoming out here in 2010 at 694,000. It was about, 2013, we reached that pre-recession weight and actually have exceeded that number, but again, that mix of jobs and the quality of the jobs has changed dramatically in that time period. So the state has recovered and has actually gone now beyond the pre-recession job numbers, but those, the mix of the jobs has certainly changed.
A lot of our beef.
If you look at the regional trends, so you've got Leita County, the state of Idaho, state of Washington, Whitman County, and Nez Perce County, this is looking from 2003 to 2013. Leita County lost 1.5%. Leita County had lost 1.5% of jobs, so there were about 200 jobs in total during that time period that were lost. State of Idaho actually gained 9% employment, state of Washington 10.2%, and Whitman County 14% in that same time period. Nez Perce County saw a 4% decline in total employment during that time period as well. So, to, over a 10-year period, to lose 1.5% is a significant hit in employment over that time period.
Those positive projections look a little pie in the sky.
There, things are turning, so I think there are certainly positive things coming. Leita County is projected to grow at a fairly modest rate over that time period, but we'll certainly have to see how that pans out. As you look at Leita County's job growth in that time period, again, 2003 jobs, 2013 by the different NAC codes, where you see some of the very significant losses, professional, scientific, and technical services, lost 305 jobs. And, you know, I think a lot of that were research in other positions affiliated with the university, maybe not necessarily on the university payroll, but related to university research and events. And those are, had average earnings per job of 48,000, which is, which is pretty high on the overall scale of the different positions. So, that's a fairly, you know, that's a 39% reduction in that category, and certainly not a category we'd like to see reduction, we want to see, obviously, growth in that area. Other services, except public administration, we also saw about a 35% decline, or 126 jobs in that category. That's a little bit lower wage category, but still had a fairly significant loss. Government lost 113 positions. I think that's reflective of University of Idaho ends up getting, I think, as state employees end up getting lumped in that category. So, that was a 2% reduction, and again, that's a $57,000 category, almost 58,000 average earnings, so those are fairly significant jobs. Where we saw some positive growth in manufacturing, actually saw a 13% increase, 45 jobs added during that time period with an average earnings of 55,000, which was good. Wholesale trade as well, had a 49% increase, 97 jobs added in that category. Administration support, waste management remediation services also saw a 20% increase there with 47 jobs in Leita County. So, those are, you know, those were some positives, and then healthcare has been growing substantially, 309 jobs in the healthcare industry, 24% increase with an average earning of 35,000. But overall, a loss of 197 jobs there with an average earning of 41,000. So, over that time period, we did see employment loss.
Isn't it a little bit odd? The agriculture grew. Guess I don't know enough about agriculture. I wonder why it grew. You'd think that as the machinery gets fancier and bigger, there's less jobs.
You, you know, some of that could be reflected in some of the construction growth, some of the new Ohio starts, because it does include forestry, so some of the wood products as well. But I don't, I couldn't tell you specifically where that growth was. And it's a high, you know, that was a 25% growth, 70 jobs at 57,000 average earnings, so that was, you know, a positive and a fairly high earning area.
Typically, I don't think these employment statistics actually include farm workers. I think they're often excluded from this, this other agriculture and forestry-related stuff.
Okay.
It's a quirk in the data, the way this data is compiled. Typical.
If we look across the state line next door to Whitman County, manufacturing had 170% increase, 1,433 jobs added over that 10-year period
We know it.
With an average earnings of 73,000 in that industry. I mean, obviously, you see Schweitzer's influence in that, in that category. Administrative support, waste management mediation was about an 84% growth rate, 64 jobs added in that category. Healthcare, again, 31% growth, 327 jobs added. And government, we saw a loss of over 100 jobs in the government category. In Whitman County, there was a growth of 46, I think, again, reflected in probably WSU's growth and the student enrollment growth they've had over there, at an average earnings of 65,000. So, you know, there were several good positive growth numbers, and overall, again, the change was 2,139 jobs in Whitman County in growth, which is a 14% overall growth rate. So, you're looking at a loss of 197 jobs here, and 2,100 added across the state line over the course of the last decade.
Is there anything that indicates how many of those jobs in Whitman County are held by people who live in Leita County?
30% would be a good round number to utilize. So, it's been good for us, and it kind of reflects how, you know, we do operate as a region, and Whitman County and WSU, WSU's always been usually our second-largest employer right after U of I, and Schweitzer, obviously, is growing to be a very large employer and employs a large number of people residing in Moscow. So, as a region, that has definitely helped, it's buffered us. Without that, you know, things would have been much more serious. Okay, I'll just walk through this, we would do that.
It's marijuana production, agriculture, recreation.
I'm not sure we're seeing that one yet.
Retail.
As you look at Leita County's total employment, so we've got, this is unemployment shown in the blue line, the blue bars, so you see we had a low of 2.5% in 2006 and peaked at 7.2% in 2010, and this is total labor force. And as you can tell, we are on the right direction, going from 7.2% down to 4.8, and then I think even dropped 2 tenths in the last month's numbers that were raised, this was as of April. But, you know, certainly unemployment is, is on the right trend, and the total workforce is growing, so it's not just migration or loss of workforce as a whole. We are seeing some modest growth in the labor force, and while we're seeing this significant decline in unemployment. So, those are all good, moving in the right direction between those two.
But look at that peak, a look at that, that's in 2006, not 2008, a little bit, we were already dropping before the
The peak of the national recession was in 2008, and the bottom was really right here between 9 and 10. We, you know, we tend to lag, I think, because of all of our government support, that we don't react here as quickly, the local economy doesn't react as quickly as, as an economy to be more private industry-based. So, I think we had a lag going in, and I always expect we're going to have a lag coming back out.
I was just trying to figure out what that little peak was in, in 2000, between five and six.
Oh, the employment?
Yeah.
Oh, I asked Catherine, I asked the Department of Labor if they had any indication there, and they were, they thought it was due to a fairly significant enrollment decline during that time period, and so maybe it was a loss of part-time employees that were in the workforce. I couldn't really get a clear answer of why that was the way it was. But yeah, you're nearly, well, you're over 1,000 in that one year, which I couldn't quite explain, but. As you look at projected employment growth over the next, from 2014 to '18, Leita County is projected to grow at 5.4%, Nez Perce at 2.9. So, again, Nez Perce lost 4% at the same time period that we lost the 1.4, 1.2%, so they had a much more significant loss and have a much lower projected growth rate, so that's not necessarily good for Nez Perce County. Cooney County is projected to grow at 5.4, which is the same as Leita. The state itself at 5.6, and Whitman County at 9.1, over the next roughly five, four years here. What's also interesting is you look at per capita income, so the United States' per capita income is shown in purple, the state's per capita income is in green, and Leita County is in red. We have always lagged the state fairly significantly, but we have tracked up, you know, consistently with, and the state obviously lags, the nation as a whole. The lowest dip we had was in 2009 at 29,000, where we dropped down to levels that were around the 2006 time period, 2007 time period. But since that time, we have had positive growth, and we actually just, in 2012, passed the state in per capita income, so we've had 16% growth in per capita income over the course of the last three years. And just this last year, for the first time, at least in this time period, per cap income in Leita County exceeded that of the state of Idaho. Now, is that indicative of the mix of jobs that you're seeing replaced after this recovery, you know, bringing down the per capita income as a whole, but, you know, the, the quality of jobs, either whether it's Schweitzer, or whether it's U of I or WSU, kind of balancing against that, pushing that per capita number up a little bit, but, I'm sorry, Nez, we're gonna
Well, so, is that per capita calculated on adult? Or, I'm just trying to think, a family of four, I don't see that we have
Yeah, per capita is different than household.
Correct.
Yes.
So, per capita is per individual, regardless of age or working capacity? Or per capita is of the workers that are in the county?
I think it's of working age, I don't know, Joel, if you're familiar with that. I don't believe it includes underage individuals on a per capita basis.
Okay.
But the, you know, I guess the message is we're seeing positive growth, and so we're seeing unemployment decline, employment growing modestly, even though we've had a fairly significant drop over that 10-year time period, and per capita income is growing and even now finally exceeding the state. Not that the state is necessarily a high bar compared to the nation, but it's moving, again, moving in the right direction. As we look at population growth, this is our population growth over the time period from the census in '80, '90, 2000, 2010 census, and then the intervening estimates at that time period. On average, we're at that 1.2% annual growth rate, and this is the annual percent growth rate, so ranging from 1.5% annual growth, 1.15, 1.4, 1.17. There was a little bump here in 2011, which was 2% growth that year, and then the latest numbers that were just released last month have us at .14%, so fairly modest. But these are all, you know, the estimates are estimates, and the estimates are volatile because they're based upon birth and death records and migration records, and so, and building starts, so they are, they are a bit volatile as you get into the estimates. But on a straight line, you know, fairly consistent growth rate over the course of the last 30 years. Looking at it compared to the region, so this one's fairly busy. I guess I'll just highlight the blue here is Moscow on average. So, you can see, Coeur d'Alene had from '90 to 2000, 2010 had probably one of the highest growth rates during that time period. I think Lewiston's bubble here in 90, in 1970 was when they annexed the Orchards area, which was what represented that large growth between '60 and '70, I think it was when that annexation occurred. Pullman had a very high number in 2012, they actually had a 4% growth between 2011 and 2012, 4.73%. But on average, and again, now looking at '13, Pullman and Moscow were about the same. Pullman had about a .11%, and we had the .14% growth overall during that time period. From 2010 to '13, 1.53% for Moscow, 2.3 for Coeur d'Alene. That one big year for Pullman in that time period pulls them out to 2.6%, and Spokane and Clarkston and Lewiston are all here at less than a percent annual growth during that time period.
Do you think that, I mean, I, I think when I came here, and I've always thought that Clarkston and Lewiston were the bigger element of the Quad Cities, but I sense a shift in that I, I could imagine that Moscow and Pullman may pull even in that Quad Cities dialogue. I just, I don't know, again, when we were down in Clarkston, I was, I never look at Clarkston that much, but I've been looking at it just recently, and it's, it's hard to see, I don't know exactly what's going on in Clarkston beside Costco, you know? So, it's an interesting thing. I just wondered if, though, hasn't Schweitzer moved down? They build a facility down in Lewiston, so you'd think they're, they're sharing some of that growth.
Yeah, I think a lot of the moving to Lewiston was just moving closer to where the workforce was, it was commuting up to Pullman. And certainly, that's, I think that's definitely, it's certainly positive for Lewiston, but I don't know if it created many new jobs from, that many of the folks that were working for Schweitzer already were already living in the valley
Oh.
And commuting out. So, I think the new job growth that created probably was muted by the fact that they, you know, they were already there. If you look at the U of I enrollment from 1975 on up to here 2010, you can see that the U of I's had a fairly significant growth rate over the time period. There has been about an eight-to-nine-year cycle where it goes through a period of growth, and then a short period of decline for a few years, and another period of growth, a little bit larger decline here, and then a peak again. And then, this is kind of where we have been since that time, which has been fairly flat. But it has been for a long period of time over history, has been a fairly significant growth of students, students from, you know, 7,800 here to, you know, the 11,151, that was the peak in, I think, 2004. But since that time, we've been kind of on this trajectory, and that certainly has an impact on the economy as we look at some of our information. If you look at WSU enrollment during the last 10 years from 2004 to 2013, WSU's gone from 17,000 to 19,000. They've added just under 2,000 students in that 10-year time period. The U of I has been kind of on this trajectory, and as of '13, we're down 563 students over that 10-year time period. So, certainly, that, that has been significant, we'll kind of see the impact of that here in a minute. So, during those two time periods, we've seen some very different things happening in enrollment. The, there's a company called Polycom that provides, calculates an economic strength index of a community, and they do it for all the micro-politan areas and all the metropolitan areas in the, in the nation. The formulas determine the economic strength of how the economy has behaved, not necessarily what's caused it to perform, and they use three different data groups to create the rankings. The first one is earnings and income, and so these sectors reflect the overall growth and size and quality of the economy. And so, this is about what people are earning, and that, you know, what they earn influences their standard of living more than anything else. So, it's a combination of these different measures of earnings within a region or within a community. The second group are the reactive industries, so these are those trailing industries such as construction, retail, and non-farm-related proprietors. So, these are the small business startups, when you have, people have money in their pocket, people open businesses because they want to deposit that money in the cash register. And so, growth in small business startups, growth in construction, growth in retail, are all kind of trailing industries that follow money that people have in their pockets. The third group are transfer payments, and these are negative sectors, so these are actually transfer payments coming in that reflect, you know, a lack of income, and a lack of disposable income. And so, that's a negative in this, in the matrix that they use to score the performance of these areas. So, for the metropolitan statistical areas in the state of Idaho, and there's five of those, there are 381 in the nation, and these are the relative rankings, the, the lower the number, the better. So, the Boise-Napa areas is the highest ranked at 177 in the Idaho groups, that'd be followed by Idaho Falls at 197, Lewiston at 290, Coeur d'Alene at 307, and Pocatello at 377, is near the bottom of the rankings for the metro areas, these are 50,000 in population greater. If you look at the micro-politan statistical areas, there are 577 of those in the nation. Twin Falls would lead in that category at a ranking of 290. That'd be followed by Moscow at 415, Blackfoot at 443, Burley 446, and then Rexburg at 458.
You have a figure in your, I forgot what micro, where is that little line for micro?
It'd be under 50,000. It'd be under fifty thousand.
Under fifty.
Yep. Now, if you look at over time, how these rankings have changed from two thousand and four to two thousand and fourteen, so over that ten-year time period, you have Pullman here at Purple, which is at five hundred and fifteen. That's hard to read and that's a bad color to use. Back in two thousand and four, they were near the bottom of the barrel. We were up here at one hundred and ten or something like that. Lewiston was right in the middle at around three hundred and the Cortlande market was up right around with us in that time period. As you can see, over this ten-year period, we have continually dropped, dropped down and then had a little period of growth from two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven in our ranking and have dropped back down to about four hundred and fifteen, I think that is. During the same time period, Pullman has moved up to one fifty-six. So we met in the middle here in about two thousand and eight and we were tracking kind of close to each other till about eleven and then we've branched off from each other during that time period. Cortlande was flat and now is taking a nosedive and Lewiston has just been kind of plugging along right in that range of the three hundreds to, to two hundred range. That's interesting when you look at, and you look at the impact of the University of Idaho on the local economy. Steve Peterson did a report in two thousand and thirteen where they tried to quantify the impact of the university on the local economy and, and their conclusion was that it represents approximately 50% of the local economy. It is a large, obviously, piece and nobody's, not a real mystery there. I don't, you know, I didn't know the exact percentage, but they identified that they felt it was about 50% of the local economy and that the students represented a fairly significant impact upon the economy. Their conclusion indicated that every student at U of I creates fifty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars in sales, thirty-one thousand in wages and salary earnings and three quarters of a job in the community. So if we took a loss of five hundred and sixty-three students over that ten-year time period, that was thirty-two million in lost sales, seventeen million dollars in lost wages and four hundred and twenty-two lost jobs during that time period. So certainly, you know, where the university goes, the city of Moscow goes and that's no mystery.
So if you look at, with, with Pullman, not only does the university grow, but Microsoft and Amazon must have, you know, as Seattle raises up in the world, the stuff that spills off the table really comes in handy. Yeah.
So then it's interesting if you take that Polycom economic strength rating and you plot it with U of I enrollment. So the blue line is our Polycom strength rating and the yellow line is the U of I enrollment during that time period.
Reflective, isn't it?
Similarly, WSU, their Polycom rating and WSU enrollment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And would you, did, did the figure come up for Washington State? Are they more like sixty-five percent or they must be a bigger than fifty percent of Pullman?
Yeah, they're about sixty-five percent of the population where U of I is about forty-five percent of Moscow's population.
I would bet that they are on average more affluent.
Yes, because they're coming from the west side. I saw that all the time. Either it's, it's the more affluent exchange students come to WSU and, and then from the west side, there are more affluent students, very, very different students. So, you know, obviously, this isn't, I mean, we would all have assumed this, but as you look at a plot today, it's, it's kind of interesting, the correlation between, you know, what's happening at the universities and the local economy.
Pullman, you know what? I was surprised in, in our college that we get a surprise. We're not an Idaho college. Our College of Architecture attracts, you'd be surprised how many of our students are from Oregon and Washington, from the small towns. In other words, the bakers, the legrands, the, the little. Forty percent of our students in our, in our architecture school are from Washington and Oregon. And, I mean, you just wouldn't predict that, I think, on, on the surface, but they are not from Tacoma or Seattle. So that in terms of their economic, you know, ability, they tend to come from Union Town or Baker or some places where they, they, they think Idaho will fit their, their, what they've imagined a good life would be.
Those are the tuition costs cheaper at the University of Idaho than it is for them as a resident.
As a resident, it's cheaper for them to come to Idaho than it is to go to, and, and many of them, at least what they say to me, and this is apocryphal, of course, but what they say is, well, who would want to go to the University of Washington, you know, that big, so they, they prefer. It's both less expensive and, and fits their idea of what. There you have it.
As you look at our construction activities as well, building, building starts are also another indicator. On average, we generally permit about a hundred and twenty-one units per year and that's a mixture of forty-one single-family homes, fourteen two-family dwellings and sixty-six multifamily units per year. We did have a fairly active construction cycle between two thousand and two thousand and nine where we had about eighteen hundred units that were permitted during that time period. So we were pushing almost, you know, over a hundred and seventy-five units per year during that time period. And that was a combination of both, a pretty strong run of single-family as well as multifamily, as you'll see. On the commercial construction, we typically average about six point one million per year on average. As you can see on the national scene for housing starts going from two thousand and five down to two thousand and nine, that was about the bottom, as in the nine to eleven time period. On average, new housing starts have been growing, but they've, they've been bouncing around a little bit over the course of the last, last two years here. But on, on the whole nationally, they're on the upswing. If you look at our history, and this is actually nineteen seventy-two to two thousand and fourteen, purples are total number of units permitted, green is going to be your multifamily, blue is your single-family construction and red's two families. So it is, you know, it is, it is fairly peaky. It does track if you, I don't think I have it on here, but if you plot it with enrollment, you can see, you know, when enrollment goes up, the next year, housing starts and especially multifamily go up. And when enrollment starts to decline, it takes about one year before that starts to decline as well. So they do track the enrollment to U of I fairly closely, which is no surprise there. Tend to follow that same kind of eight-year, nine-year cycle that we saw in enrollment. And you can see this time period from two thousand here was, was pretty active for total number of units constructed during that time period. If you look just over here from two thousand to fourteen, you can see we're at two hundred and forty-nine, two hundred and eighty-nine, three hundred units permitted during those three years. Saw a big drop here in oh seven, then back up to two sixteen, one forty-four and again back down here fairly low. Single-family, which traditionally has been the low forties, peaked at about seventy-nine units here in two thousand and six and has been kind of slowly sliding. And we've been down in the twenty to twenty-six unit range here over the course of the last five years. And, and that's not been, not been changing significantly. So certainly we have seen in the last three, four years here, a significant decline, although some multifamily is still happening. Looking at commercial construction, again, this is the six point one million average here. We had a spike in, was it two thousand? That was actually the wastewater treatment plant expansion, the large one. And then the, the two thousand and three here was Gritman's expansion and those are the two big, big, big peaks. But we have seen fairly active construction activity happening from two thousand and eight, eleven, twelve. This year, as of last month, we were at six and a half million. So construction on the commercial side has continued to be fairly strong recently. You know, as we talked, there are several other projects that we've seen. These are all out of order. The one I wanted to kind of really look at as we've, as we look at community projects, the Moscow School District has, has done about six million in renovations this year. But the ones that are kind of important to us is some of the U of I's larger projects. The Integrated Research and Innovation Center project, which I think in construction is about forty-nine million dollars, is getting underway this year, as well as the College of Education renovation, which is a seventeen million dollar project. And those, you know, those are both good construction jobs in the community and there also are investment in capital facilities at U of I that we hope will help them attract and retain students, faculty and staff and, and help them be more competitive in the marketplace. They also have a new aquaculture lab at one point four million that they're doing. So this is probably the largest period of, of capital projects at the U of I for quite some while, quite some while. I mean, they've been starved for a large number of years and Ray and his group have been busy lately on these projects.
Been ten years, really.
It's been a very difficult, difficult time for the U of I. So this is good to see them getting some capital improvements, new facilities.
They're ready to, I think the guy told me, within sixty days, they'll start digging. They're just setting up the, the construction office for the, for the Integrated Research building. So that'll be probably really the largest, the most expensive building we've built, period.
WSU has had some quite big ones during this time period.
WSU has been doing, I think right now they've got a hundred million in capital going on.
Yeah. When I was director of facilities, I had that. I was always in shock. We'd get twelve million dollars a year and I'd think, wow, got twelve million. And you'd go over and talk to my colleague over at Washington State, oh, we had forty-nine million, you know? And so it was a bad year for us. We had, so they, they do have, like I say, that what falls off the table over there is pretty significant. Got that big hands to catch it.
So, well, as we probably all know, a great recession has had a significant impact on our local, regional, national, local economies. And during that same time period, U of I has had some significant reductions in state funding and support and also has been challenged with enrollment growth. And that has had that significant impact on our local economy over the last decade. But that has been offset and buffered certainly by Schweitzer's significant employment growth and WSU's continued enrollment growth over that same time period. So that has helped, you know, it's helped Moscow a great deal. So that's pretty much it.
Don't you think it's, oh, go ahead.
I, I just wonder about, what about, how does cost of living figure into all this? You know, like if, if per capita income is, you know, a certain figure.
Right.
How, how is that holding up against cost of living?
Well, I haven't looked and I haven't looked at that specifically.
Be kind of interesting.
Yeah. You know, as far as the local cost of living, you know, I haven't looked at any speci, I haven't looked at any, any studies or any data specifically, but it appears as if housing cost has probably softened a little bit over the last seven years, maybe starting to pick up again here the last two.
Like rents or?
Rents, home prices, you know, we saw some, some value reductions in the real estate market probably would have, would have reduced some cost, you know, the housing component of the cost of living. But I haven't seen anything specific.
Food's gone up for sure, gas.
Gas has gone up for sure.
Yeah, ground is being lost.
Well, the CPI is, well, it's not necessarily a full indicator, but the CPIs have been fairly flat and modest, but they are starting to see more growth. I think this year, the March index was about just under two percent on the nation, but I'm, you know, regionally.
I think it's, I mean, that, your report is not that encouraging. Not that it's your report, but I guess what surprises me is that our town feels pretty good and, and it feels better than your, than, than the report. And, you know, I was, so, and perhaps that is because some of those folks over in Pullman come over here and chow down with us, maybe, but I just, I'm surprised over the years. I've been related to this town for fifty years and I don't think the town's ever been any more animated or pleasant than it is in, right now, which is, surprises me a little bit based on just what you just.
I would comment, however, that the food banks are seeing a, a great business.
Are they?
My, my wife works as a volunteer there and every, every month there's, there's more go through on her particular day.
Well, not everybody eats downtown at our five great restaurants. I, I think we have to be, that's, that's clear. But I, I guess, I suppose one of the things that worries me, I see a lot of young people eating in, when I go out to eat and I eat out a lot and I, I worry that that's just part of their debt, that they're picking up the debt that we hear about because I don't recall going out to dinner when I was in college. Things seem to have changed.
Pizza was a splurge.
Their cars are all newer.
You only got to go out to dinner on Mother's Day or something and now it seems like, I'm just shocked that on a Tuesday night, sometimes you have to wait for a few minutes to get a table. It seems unique.
I think what Joel said, reflected by the polarization of income where you get the higher-end jobs and then the lower-end jobs and the middle's not so much there, so.
Right.
People that need help at the bottom, maybe.
Deb, did you have a call?
I'm curious where the motorsport, eleven thousand square feet, that's pretty good sized, where's that?
It's at North Elm Business Park.
Yeah.
It's just right next to it.
Oh, the red. Okay, didn't know it already had a tenant.
Yep.
Yeah. And specifically, they're building that for their own use.
Oh, okay. And where's the new aquaculture lab going to be on campus?
I couldn't tell you. I don't know the location. If it's in the same, they're just.
They're just expanding the one they have?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I know the one right now is located down close to the treatment plant, I thought.
Yeah, you go out farm, just keep going out past the barns and out where the, it's actually out where the swine barn used to be.
I have no idea about that. I, I'm just, I've never sat in on any, anything, but the, the big lab is going to be quite an impact on the middle of campus.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Right where the old Navy building used to be, so it's, it's right there. So that site is.
The IRIC?
Yes, it's going where they're old.
So it'll be on Line Street and, and the mall fitting, and so it'll really, it'll be a little urban now.
All right, next up is West A Street Corridor Master Planning Project Report.
Just wanted to give a quick report. The, the city and the, and the University of Idaho have been discussing the A Street Corridor, and I mean that section between Farm Road and Warbonnet that's unconstructed behind the mall for many, many years. The connection and continuation of the roadway has been on the university's campus master plan, Longridge Plan, it's been on the city's comp plan, as shown by this dotted green line here. And the city, or I should say smart transit, has recently expanded service out to, to Moscow, the medical facilities out on West A, as well as the Walmart store and are having to come up here and turn around and come back out because they're, they can't, they're coming out here west, coming up, turning around, coming back and then coming back out on A. And there's a desire, I think, to begin the conversation of laying out that alignment and developing the information that's necessary to make application for grant funding for roadway construction. So the university and the city have, pending council's approval of the budget, coming up here in August, have agreed to undergo a, kind of a master planning project on that corridor. And so we'll be working on with them to establish the, the roadway alignment, the grading plan, the utility service plan and the construction cost estimates on that roadway. Part of that will also be taken a look at what we anticipate for adjacent land uses on that corridor. Currently, that area is owned motor business with the exception, this is a city limit boundary here. So the dairy is located right in the middle of that. And the, the U of I has indicated that, that that facility is, and their intent is for that to. that to be relocated in the future.
We've been saying that for 25 years and two.
Do they mean relocated elsewhere in the, in the state or just elsewhere on campus?
I think they'll be evaluating that. I think the thought is that the industry is down south and is probably likely where the, the facility, a new research, dairy research facility would be located.
There was, I think there was a major proposal to actually do that about five, four.
Yeah, yeah.
I think probably was killed by the recession.
The recession killed that one. The state pulled back the funding on that one.
But it's been, been seriously proposed with some, some industry funding lined up behind the proposal.
And then they would maintain their ownership of that rectangle?
They own everything.
They own, they own turquoise too.
Yeah, they, they own everything underneath the mall and the university inn, the theaters, and then the north farm property. So other than Montgomery's here, they own pretty much everything up in that, that area. So they would dedicate a right away for the street. And, and then as we looked at, at the comp plan, it's consistent with U of I's long range campus plan, as this is indicated as being for commercial use in the future. And so we'll probably be looking at the, the overall layout and grading plan and how the streets and access and utilities interface with anticipated future land use as part of that study. So we'll be starting that. Both entities are contributing funding to the effort and so we'll be doing a request for statements of qualifications for consulting firms, engineers and landscape architect firms to provide their qualifications, select a firm and work through that design process. I'm anticipating we'll probably publish that RFQ here in early August, make a selection in early September, contract in place and probably begin on the project here in October. So just wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that effort and we'll probably be bringing some information to you as it progresses.
Will the city limit line go up then and square off?
Ultimately, ultimately, the northern boundaries, we've kind of identified about 120 acre area that will be part of the study. This is kind of a large bowl with a ridge, it's up here. So we'll kind of let the lay of the land help guide where the boundaries of the study area and the master planning effort should end. So it'll, it will encompass a larger area, the study will. And then, you know, the, the dairy movement is probably a multi-year, obviously, effort and so nothing's going to be happening today or tomorrow. But the, the interest that the city has is that there, there is an interest in making a grant application for future tiger funding, possibly to fund the road construction. And that does have that impact upon the dairy and it is causing the U of I to look at that more closely now and, and look at the future use of that facility.
Might we see the eastern end, east of the dairy, that piece of road and that piece of ground that looks like it's plowed fields develop before some of the rest of the dominoes took over?
It's, it's quite possible. There was a proposal for this parcel here. Home Depot was looking at that site here about 2006, '07. And that, they actually entered into the lease agreement, they had made it all the way through the negotiations with the university to lease the property and then the recession kind of started to tip and they started pulling back, so that was not executed. So it certainly is possible that, that the phasing and that they were going to be bringing, bring A Street up to essentially this boundary. And it certainly is possible that this becomes an early, early phase of the project while this is in the position of relocation and then it continues on through. So there, I could see that.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the Walmart and its parking lot.
Yep.
And seeing that that would fit fairly well under that.
Yes, yes.
Spot there.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions about the West A Street master planning effort? Citizen survey questions discussion, that is, you will call that we do this survey every couple of years and our commission puts in an item, used to be more.
Just handing out copies of the prior questions that have been asked, just so we have those for reference. So this, Jen Pifner from administration provided these. Starts with 2012, which are the ones that were more recently asked. And then, so this is a survey that's completed every two years, so 2012 the last time, 10, eight, six and four. And so those, these are the, the list of questions that we have asked previously. Jen has asked for the questions from the commissions by September 12th, so we've got a little time to work on this, so we don't have to, have to nail it down tonight. But I wanted to start the discussion. It seems like in the past we've always been having to prepare them fairly quickly, but we have the, the month of August to get these kind of nailed down.
To begin, can you tell us about the status of the ADU survey that we were hoping to conduct?
I was actually going to ask you if you had any further conversations with Nick here, whether that was going to be a possible student project.
Okay. My conversation with Nick was, he was more interested in think, I think it was Wendy's suggestion to think about climate change response and impacts. I think he saw more open field running there than either when he'd approached me about North Main or about the ADUs. So I think Nick is off the table.
Okay. If that's the case, then we will progress with preparing the survey instrument in the month, the rest of July, early August. We want to, and we'll get our mailing list prepared and ready to go. We want to try to do it in early September, once everybody's kind of fully back and passed the first week or two of the semester of the craziness. So we will, if that's the case, then we'll, we'll progress. I'll bring a draft here, maybe next meeting, we can start to look at a draft instrument for that. So if we, if that's the case, we would do it early September. We probably would allow three weeks for responses, a couple of weeks for compiling, so we probably would be in kind of October when we have the results of that.
Okay, which I think is where I'd kind of imagined, we would resume the ADU work and try to get it to council before Christmas.
Okay.
My other thought when thinking about what question we might want to ask is somewhat reflected in what's on the 2010 survey in the sheet that you shared with us. That is, I was thinking, we've, we've done some work on ADUs in this instrument and we're now going to do a separate survey around that, so we shouldn't beat that horse again. But the question of residential densification and the piece that you mentioned earlier in this meeting around, it's the outgrowth of our North Main Street thinking, that is, residential densification in commercial zones. I first started thinking just in motor business, but we could probably think about it in, in some other way than just that narrow zone, which may or might not be understood by the population. But that might be an interesting one. So how do people perceive, react to the idea that we've kicked around of housing above and behind in, along the North Main Street corridor or, I mean, there's some parts of motor business zone which just doesn't seem likely to be appropriate or, or desired by the current owners. I mean, I can't imagine Wincor putting apartments on top.
What if they did?
So, so that would be a, a thought about a question would be to explore that piece that we've been talking about a little bit.
The things to consider on the questions is depending upon the timing of when we would want to do something. So, so we provide a question now, it's likely January, maybe even February before we get the results back. So that's just something to consider if we think about it. Typically, the, the survey goes out early October and usually a month goes by, so you're into November. It compiles over the holiday, so Jen will be working on compiling the report and looking, doing the data analysis. And then it's usually presented to the council in either late January, early February. So just, that is something to think about, just how it may impact what questions are chosen in the timeline.
Snow removal, questions would draw a lot of interest.
Yes, during that time period. And typically, we're allowed two most often, so.
Well, the, the, your, your thought sort of relates to Legacy Crossing and that, the space that we have that, that is more brownfield also. It's just, it's hard for me to be as optimistic as I should be after you've given that careful report.
It's all, they're all noise. That was the past.
Planning right up at 4%, you know, 1.2, so, so hard. There aren't a lot of really nagging questions on our.
I don't think we could get at the questions that came out of our last round of readings about millennials and their housing preferences. The 2010 one that asked, would you be interested in high quality, high density living near downtown in the University of Idaho campus? That probes it somewhat in that direction. It would only be useful though if we could understand the demographics of who was interested or not interested.
Which we can get at a little bit. We have that age, we have student status, we have employment status. I mean, there, there is a page of kind of demographics that do allow us to drill down a little bit into it, maybe not as, as deeply as you would like, but there is some ability to, to dig into that or what quadrant of the city they live in.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, we don't have to, you know, it can be just, we can put this on the agenda for next week too and, and people can think about it and.
So these are excerpted from different surveys that have been?
These are, these are the past questions.
Okay.
So the past questions that this commission has submitted for inclusion on the citizen survey.
So in theory, let's see, are, by the time this information from the next questionnaire comes back, we may have some idea of how the ADU unit is going.
But we'll have all that data back before this. So you, so we may want to be thinking about kind of what's, what's next beyond that horizon.
Well, we're talking about millennial housing. What about questions about retirement housing? You know, things that people might be interested in or think what's, that people are aware of what's available. I mean, I just, you know, so many folks of us kind of approaching that time and, you know, when caring with my mother and that sort of thing, just sort of seeing what's out there, particularly Creekside, there's a, there's a certain kind of housing for folks, you know, over 55 and stuff. That place just seems full, waiting lists, you know, there just seems to be maybe a little bit of a, and with so many folks retiring, just this baby boom thing.
Right. So what, what kind of opportunities would be interesting?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
To you?
Right.
As retirement?
Right.
Towards downtown?
Yeah, right.
The, what's it called up here? This condominium that's got the parking underneath?
Ambassador.
Ambassador.
It's surprising how many people that are still very active are out at Fairview.
Yeah, and, and, you know, folks that.
Just don't want to take care of a house anymore.
They like it out there, but they feel disconnected.
Yes, they don't like living that far from downtown.
Right, right. And that there's not the, the transportation and your, you know, things.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think there's a niche there.
So some ideas to ponder.
Yeah.
Or maybe around housing and where in town or what character of thing.
Because a lot of us stay in town and don't leave after.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I, I think we should kind of toy with that idea a little bit and see if we can come up with some thoughts. I like it.
I wonder if you could even broaden that out to pick up some other amenities that people would want to, which a, a growing retirement community might pick a different set of amenities than ball fields. Or.
Yeah.
Want to be downtown because they want to be closer to the medical campus or.
Right.
Whatever it might be.
It's certainly a draw.
I personally think the, you know, the big city oftentimes is awfully vibrant for older people. This, our city is not that, it's pretty.
They can't get there.
Benign. And if, and so I think being away, several miles, a couple miles away from downtown just doesn't make sense. I think you're right on target, for me at least, and I'm only a few blocks from town, but I don't want to go that way. I want to be, I want to just.
Right.
Take the elevator down to the coffee shop.
Well, for the folks at Creekside, I mean, a lot of them don't drive, or maybe they don't drive at night because of their eyesight or, but, you know, the bus ends at 5:00, so they can't come down and do things. But I've also sort of had an idea of, you know, if, if something were to be developed, say, you know, the big field across from our house or something, you know, like some sort of housing community kind of targeted toward that population, but maybe it has its own little mini mall where you can get your haircut or maybe go to a little store or even have a quick care there, a little, I, I don't know, just having, I think, like where my mother lives, yes, you can go to Safeway, but even if that little center had something available to just run over and get a carton of milk or, I mean, you know, so.
A bar.
No.
That would be good. A project for Legacy Crossing.
Yeah, yeah, so.
One of the things that struck me about that, that index of what you were showing on the latter part of your presentation, it, it listed transfer payments in red as a negative. One of the biggest components of transfer payments is social security, which is a positive and is, I think, quite significant in this community. My next door neighbor retired from a university in Illinois and just moved here. That's, I, I wish they'd looked a little bit more at that.
And I don't know if they looked at, they'd used, used the term welfare and Medicaid and I don't know if there were certain kinds of transfer payments they looked at or whether they were lumping it all together, I don't know.
They may not.
Maybe you emphasized the negative on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will ponder.
Before we go, I, my, my, I like Rebecca's comment, but I'm also sort of inclined towards something like the, the laundry list for 2010, strikes me as something that could be massaged into a, a useful but fairly general question.
Yeah, and you could, you could add retirements, something on that list too.
Or maybe Rebecca's can be developed into one and, and something like this could be developed into another.
Certainly the water issue needs to be, as we need to keep asking ourselves, reminding ourselves that of water, we're not going to get a surplus of water in the future.
Yeah, that might be a thing to see if we can coordinate with the Sustainable Environment Commission, just to get one good question that gives us some insights.
And after listening to Bill's presentation, economic development probably.
Well, job growth is always, we ask, we ask a number of standard questions every year and what's the most significant issue facing the community and, you know, employment opportunities is always a significant response. You know, just, it is.
All right. So next is discussion of shared readings. This is not a discussion of the readings, this is a prologue to the discussion of the readings. I think it will. I think it was Wendy's suggestion several meetings back that we think about one related to climate change and planning. And Bill has posted today two fairly lengthy documents. And one is Planning for Climate Change in the West. It's the Lincoln Policy Institute, Lincoln Institute of Land Policy out of somewhere in Massachusetts.
Massachusetts.
And it's really kind of looking, the executive summary piece kind of lays out some of the issues that, that the West, inner Mountain West in particular faces with respect to both climate change and the impacts that it may have on our somewhat laissez faire approach to planning in much of the inner Mountain West. The second one is out of Canada, Exploring Climate Change Adaptation and Planning. It's the ICLI Group, which is a local government association. We participate in ICLI America, I suppose, and this is out of the ICLI Canada branch. You may want to take approaches that you learned in college by reading the abstract and the major headings and the concluding paragraph, or you may want to read the whole thing in great detail. They, they both look like interesting documents. The Canadian one had a series of little mini case studies of impacts on various Canadian cities of, of weather-related issues primarily. And, and I guess I would invite, and we can talk about it, but I would invite that as you are reading, that you might read with this question in mind. What climate and planning issues would you like to explore further in our Moscow context? So the, these readings make sure you're, oh, yeah, and that idea does seem to apply here, whether it's water or something else, and that we could then maybe use this broad survey of the landscape to guide trying to find some more readings further down the year. But I'm open to other thoughts now, and obviously when, when you've had a chance to read. So we had initially, I think I'd initially hoped we would have had readings by now, but as these came together, they were so long, I thought, no, no, you need a full two weeks head start to, to ponder the documents.
I think you can get three weeks this time, the way the calendar falls.
Ah, ah, so there's a fifth Wednesday in the month. Okay, great. All right. Anything else you'd like to share on this topic, or something else for the good of the order?
I just heard that Miami now at High Tide Downtown is under 18 inches of water several times a day. It's not because of any strange event, it's just that's what High Tide does now. How's that for scary?
Yeah, I think the East Coast is, is, there have to be a fair number of either head in the sand or thoughtful people on the East Coast, you know, those of us who are living above 2,000 feet, it's a different world, but it is, I, I just, I, I can't cope with New York and, and, and the whole, that whole watery area, New Jersey and what have you, of what, if, if these changes are gonna take place.
Well, those people will have to move somewhere.
But seems to me that, that water is still becomes a, a bigger issue for us in the long term than, than some other, I don't know what our weather's gonna be like, but you seem to be a strange, a little benign pocket, though my tree almost blew this afternoon, so...
Not another one.
With that exception.
But when you put Deb's comment and your comment together, that is, there may be climate migrants who find us looking more appealing than where they are.
And then that puts more...
That puts more pressure on our water supply. So our growth rate may change. I, I don't know how to speculate on that, or who would be the, those moving to us, but...
Yeah, and I think that's probably, besides some of the other things of just being in Idaho, not having a significant water resource is part of the reason that people, industry, haven't come here, I think. I think you can go to Coeur d'Alene because there's a puddle of water there, and you can dig down 10 feet and get to the water table, and that's not what we offer. And so my guess is that really insightful planning people, as they look for places to take their, their light industry and what have you, are inclined to be in the Boise Valley or in, in the Coeur d'Alene corridor because of those kinds of things. I, I just presume that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, and we'll see you on the 13th of August, it looks like, I guess. Pretty much.